Roll call. Tom Carocci.
Here.
Chris Nagy.
Here.
Hozzy Jozzy.
Here.
Jeff Schmel.
Here.
Nitya Thacker.
Here.
And with Hanover, we have.
Brian Coker.
Brian Coker. And I'm Craig Kiloche. All Stanford pledge. Flag.
United States of America. Do the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with any public comment or citizen agenda items. Having none, we'll move on to the first item of business. Steel club phase three preliminary major subdivision. You guys want to introduce yourselves?
Yes, good evening. Jim Preston, Attorney for the Attorney for the Attorney for the Department of State. Am I right? And you know Scott, that's the project that you're here for. We're here for the plan review. We did get a comment letter from your engineer, from Hanover Engineering. And we have kind of thick letter. We have 68 saddle comments, 45 store over management comments, 32 zoning comments. But the good news is the pier will be pretty much watered by. In addition to those, with the exception of perhaps five or six items, we'd like to discuss with you. And that discussion, we had at least.
Okay.
That's fine.
Well, as you said, five states, but mainly we have a waiver test. And I revised that today after getting Brian's review letter. There were a few items that he picked up in subdivision regulations, so I just revised that. For waiver request, I think most of you are here for phase two. Basically, the waivers that were asked before, the same waivers that were requested and granted for phase two. It deals with like some planned scale issues showing information off the property for a certain distance, things like that. So aren't any actual specific ones that I see that I need to go over the ground? Like I said, they are the very, for the most part, identical to the waivers on the random phase two.
Yeah, since we just got this today, I can't say I've studied it in great detail. But most of the ones on here, I do recognize, and there's a few in there, Scott, that I have to take some time on. And you would need to see if we can look everything around. But in general, they're pretty similar to phase two.
Can we put the plan up? Jim? Yeah, Jim Preston. And can you guys maybe just run through briefly what it looks like? I mean, there's some people in the audience and then maybe some people on here that haven't completely seen it.
Okay, we could actually start there. This is the overall full golf course property. Phase two was the Ross Hill development. Which is up on the upper right corner of the screen there. And what we're doing in here for you tonight is phase three. Phase three has two development areas, Fairway Woods, which consists of 63 townhomes. And then the turn, which is 59 homes in the far left side of the property, which is next to the school. And do you want to go to phase? This shows you a blow up of the Fairway Woods. Morris Avenue, the main road coming in off Los Angeles right here. And then it raises out to the sea. And then we have these cul-de-sacs off the end. One of the comments that Brian and me showed to provide a cul-de-sac right side of the road here, right by Los Angeles Road. And that's because there's a steep bank here and we could not comply with the road requirements. So we were trying to reconnect this in here. So that's why we put the ball up there. And if you go to phase three, that's a blow up of the turn. The turn has a road coming in off of Reservoir Road. It's into a cul-de-sac bowl in the back here. And then there is a another cul-de-sac that comes off in the middle of what's called Armor Avenue. With another cul-de-sac bowl here. And these are all the homes that were being constructed. And then Golf Course, that's the office of the Southland Golf Course. That's a general overview of what's happening with phase three.
One other comment, Scott, you mentioned about the end of the cul-de-sac, but that the position of Worth Road with respect to the road roads. I know that was a comment from Public Works. Can you explain why you're not connecting?
So in 2014 and 15, we were going through this. The residents from Worth Road asked that we not connect it. And so they asked that we not even, you know, even bring it. And we said, well, we'll put a gate there. And they asked here in this forum if we would not even line them up. And so that's what we did.
And so ultimately, you know, some of the townships asked it aside, but I wanted you to revisit that as to why that's not yet.
So that just ends in a dead end? It's not even a cul-de-sac there?
There's only a couple of houses there. And remember that some of the comments from, I think, by the Lehigh Valley Plan Commission was about snow plowing. But it's probably the road, we're going to do all the snow plowing. So it's not necessarily a concern of Public Works. I know Public Works, you know, commented on it, but they're not theoretically, they're never going to have to do the work on the road, including the snow plowing.
And Scott, you said the other cul-de-sac, there were slope issues there that you couldn't address?
There's a difference of, there's a difference of probably eight feet, 16 feet elevation from the road to that cul-de-sac. And this road is sloping down towards Los Angeles. And it'd be a very steep slope if you're trying to match down to the grade of the road. And we do have off this little, off the cul-de-sac, there is an emergency access out there. If you could come off that cul-de-sac right there, that would be designed that has emergency.
What's the width of that?
It would be 12 feet.
Has, did we get comments from emergency services yet on the plans?
Yeah.
We did get a public review letter from the council fire marshal and also from the county police department.
And what did they say?
The fire marshal says that no major issues, but I do have concerns with the turn subdivision proposing the landscaping. Do you want to go to sheet three? So this is a landscape buffer right here. He has some concerns that putting a landscape buffer all along here. We have trees that are specified in the ordinance and he would like to see maybe shorter trees there. He said he had a fire coming out of Panther Way that he would not want to see high trees or.
Trees would be in the way of the area left, I think.
Yes. That was his main concern.
Do you plan to change that now?
It starts with.
Yeah, we're going to accommodate that.
Be some pretty tall trees. Higher than here.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good one. That's a new one, so. Should the town of Belver put smaller trees in? All right with that.
And then with regards to the police department, they had three comments. It says make sure there's sufficient site distance, safe site distance for these roads, which we checked where it is. They would like vertical reflective striping on the stop sign posts. And they said they don't need stop bars at all, stop signs.
So you're able to address the concerns of the fire department, the police department, because they have a letter here too, right?
Yeah, right.
They had no issues with that.
And then Brian did have in his review letter, there are a number of maintenance and access roads that be designed as required by the ordinance. And he just questions the council if they're whether they're suing or stopping the road.
Just a couple of things on the waivers here that I have a question about. The waiver for widening existing roads along the golf course, which I understand why everyone wanted to do that. What about at the intersection of, what is that intersection? Armor Avenue and Reservoir, or Reservoir Road?
That would be right here.
With that, is that, is there any issue with the road width of Reservoir Road where that intersection comes in?
You mean existing now?
The existing, yeah. Because I don't think that's planned to be wide there, right? Reservoir Road's not going to be wide where the intersection is?
No.
And there's no issue with the existing width of that road?
No, there's many intersections on Reservoir Road.
And it's designed to be to the town ordinance for the radiuses and things like that.
So with the left-hand turn, you want, with the extra traffic, you don't see a problem?
We don't anticipate that now, not to the effect of clientele that we use on other deals.
Regarding the spec on the road, the asphalt spec, they were asking for airport mix, which I got a towel off the way you went.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, the base coat is a certain size stone. Bigger. And then the, there's a sort of intermediate. This is a mix of the intermediate and the base coat. It's a fairly common, it's very thick.
Okay.
Instead of sort of layers of different types, it's intermediate going, it's a structural asphalt, we'll say. Just like any base coat.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, what is the profile of the road going to be then? Because it looked like the profile was, what we were, I guess the town was asking for was like nine inches of DGA or whatever. And then four inches of stabilized base and then two inches of wearing course.
Right.
Are you just asking to replace the wearing course with the airport?
No, not the wearing.
So we're changing all profile?
Just, just the structural, yeah. Yeah, right, it was approved also, same thing was approved.
I figured it was approved, I wasn't involved in phase one or phase two, I kind of figured it was approved there. I'm just asking a question, I mean, I'll let you know what you're getting into too.
Yeah, right, exactly. I'm very interested in this road lasting as long as possible.
Yeah.
So it's a mix that we use on a lot of our roadways that we.
Okay, I just, I've never seen it before, honestly, I've never seen that before, so I'm just kind of.
Ultimately, it's something that we can put in. We anticipate that we won't put a wearing course in for some amount of time. There's a lot of townhouses here squeezed in. This is the whole idea with this, we took the capacity of 280 acres and now we're squeezing it off, squeezing it on third. So we have so many homes squeezed in that we believe we're not going to get to the wearing course until we have a great percentage done.
Okay, so this is, so this is basically, you're going to put a wearing course over this airport mix?
Eventually, yes, yes.
I just, all this wasn't really clear earlier last week.
Yeah.
Right, that's basically 19 millimeter, right? The airport mix is the using it up?
I don't know that that's how they classify it.
Okay.
But do you have a problem getting that from the plans? There's still a lot of roads here. Yeah. You know, we have a lot of problems with a lot of things since 2020. So, yeah, it could be a moot point here, right, Brian? Oil, Charlie products are tough, that remains to be seen.
I meant just the different design, you know?
Yeah.
Ten dollars a township, so running 25 millimeter or 19, you can get that.
So for the amount of roads we had, we probably will. You know, because though, if we were doing somebody's driveway in this, maybe not, right?
The plant will mix it up for you.
And likely they'll mix it up, you know, we're talking about, you know, thousands of yards here of cubic yards of material. So they'll likely, you know, accommodate us. But again, it actually will, wearing course keeps the water from going through. And then, you know, and then you have freestyle, it breaks up, you have potholes and all that. Everybody who lives in Pennsylvania understands. So the airport mix is, keeps that water out a little bit longer than, than a plain old face coat.
I think it's similar to 19, because 19 has a smaller aggregate. And that's really what I think.
It has structural value, but also ceiling value.
You think you're going to do all that in one shot? Page three, page in one shot?
Oh, yeah, I would say we, yes, we will do it all in one shot. That's likely what will happen. Yeah, we're building these townhouses to suit, you know, so they're going to be, you know, custom. They're all custom to houses. And so we're going to have so many contracts done that we would then, you know, it would pay for, you know, the road. So it's about a third. Once we get about a third sold, that's why we're sort of waiting on raw sale. You know, we had that approval, whatever that was, almost a year ago.
If your plan on what wearing over top of the airport mix, it's not what any construction says. So you should think about that with respect to curve grades.
Yeah, right, in the long run, right? Yeah, we have to mill, we have to mill some areas near the curve and that kind of thing.
I think what Mr. Spurgs meant was that we were concentrating the houses in certain areas.
Oh, yeah.
I guess the big question.
Did you say that you're going to meet the requirements from the Lehigh Valley Plan Commission letter?
Yeah, there wasn't much there from the Lehigh Valley Plan Commission. It talked about similar things that Public Works talked about, snow plowing, that kind of thing. And again, it's a moot point. I will admit, we've done subdivisions in the past with cul-de-sacs a pain. You know, the cul-de-sacs are a pain, there's no question about it. But people like cul-de-sacs, they like to live on them. It's not easy to maintain from the Public Works perspective. I don't remember, that was pretty much one of their main points. I think they mentioned Worth Road, you know, thing not being lined up. Otherwise, you know, I think a lot of people are, it's this unique thing for lower salt catchment, this development. This is, this is an amendment to the golf course used in the R40. But what everybody likes about it, from environmentalists to, you know, the buyers themselves, is it's on a golf course that's 200 acres of open space around it. And that's what we were able to preserve at a time when it was the possibility that they were going to cover the, you know, something, they were going to sell all silver, that is, we're going to sell off and just cover the whole place with 150 high houses.
And I'm chair of the council EAC and we looked at this last year. There were no concerns from environmentalists and highly EAC.
And there's going to be an easement on the open lands, right? And is that, is that easement in place yet? Well, it's, yes, it's, 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 it's part of the zoning requirement for cluster development.
Right, I just didn't know if that had been recorded yet.
Well, everything's recorded, that verbiage is recorded when we're recording the plan.
There's no easement recorded yet. There are notes on the plan that require, that the ordinance requires, but from the actual document.
It's not yet recorded.
And I think they have to do that before they even record phase two. I think that's one of the comments.
That's it, exactly.
Ryan, any other issues with the listed waivers?
Other than I, I'd just like the chance to run through them with Scott as he's revising the plan. I don't have anything other than my, than my. The, I mean, there are a couple of things in the letter to talk about. Township input with regards to emergency access and road crossing issues. Is that anything that we would need to comment on at this point? Anything that requires our input?
I think I, one of the things in the letter asks if you're putting stop signs at the carport crossings of the roads.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. Maybe where it hits are the roads where the cars are on, you mean? Yes, I thought you meant on the golf course. No, no. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so, yeah, the question, the concern, and I don't want to speak for Brian, but, you know, the emergency access road basically hook you onto the golf course. Right, and I think that, you know, it's an odd thing to see for an emergency access road because you're going on the golf course. But I will tell you this, we, in order for us to maintain the golf course, we have triaxle trucks on it. You know, we have backhoes on it and triaxle dump trucks, that kind of thing. So the, even though they're cart paths, you think that much to it, they're substantial. They're substantial enough, again, that we are moving around stone and sand and, you know, that kind of thing, heavy equipment. So whether it's a fire truck that comes into the golf course, which I don't, I can't imagine that's going to ever be the case. But if that was the case, a fire truck could go through. So the, the, the cart paths are wide enough to put virtually any kind of equipment on. And quite frankly, in an emergency, if the truck had to go across the golf course, so would it? If there's an emergency, you know, that's that.
Do you keep them, do you maintain them in the winter? You take the snow off the.
Well, not in the middle of the golf course, but we are going to maintain them because every, every, and you asked me to bring an elevation or to. Jim has, I sent him an elevation view of, if you can put a boundary number one, Jim. Each, each townhouse is going to have a golf cart, actually one of the colored ones, if you could get to that.
You want the actual?
Yeah, it'd be a little easier to see. Each, each townhouse has a cart. So the idea is, you know, these are typically retirees or young nesters at the very minimum. And the little garage is, well, one's to the right and one's to the left. These are, this is a twin, they're going to have carts in them, so cart, golf carts. And so you would, you would, you live here and really spend all your time on the property. You go to the clubhouse for dinner, you know, the pool, fitness center, that whole kind of stuff. And so to answer your question, roundabout way here, Brian, is yes, we're going to have to maintain them. We're going to get these people to the services that they're going to be using at the clubhouse. So there will be some, if not all, some of the cart paths plowed. You know, we don't have to do any kind of plowing this winter, so, you know, everybody would have been happy. This is actually, these are the ones we designed for a twin, for a couple of customers in the Ross Hill. But they're all going to be of similar look. I think there's one more look. Actually, that one on the right is 45 minutes per feet.
It's a big empty guest house.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what, that's what people find. I have a feeling that before we're done, especially in Fairway Woods, they're going to be a little smaller.
Is the, is the stormwater plan review complete? Is that done now?
Yeah, it is.
All right, I saw something on that. Any other comments? It's the pleasure of the commission.
Well, this is the preliminary plan, so it depends on whether you want to see some of the things in the engineering letter cleaned up and brought back? Or whether you're okay making a recommendation on the preliminary plan and the waivers tonight?
Thoughts on that?
Do we want to wait for the final review of the waivers? I mean, we don't, we don't see anything in there that's groundbreaking.
Yeah.
Brian's comfortable, are you comfortable?
If there's nothing that jumps out at you guys, what we'll do, we'll make sure that everything in the letter gets done between Lincoln and I. And then the letter to waivers that we feel council needs to approve, we'll go in council's motion. If we feel they can work it out without waiver, then.
Then they'll have to work it out before going to council?
We're okay with that.
Yeah?
That's good. I'll be okay with that, Brian recommends.
Can you make a motion to review the waivers listed in the February 23rd, 2023 meets engineering letter? Subject to Ryan reviewing them and discussing them with the applicant prior to the applicant going to council?
Sounds good. Somebody wants to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, any discussion?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the second motion would be on the preliminary plan recommendation.
And you're okay getting it all worked out before it goes to council? We want to take the letter as short, like this to council.
We are, we're in here, we're in here.
Yeah, clean it up would be good.
Understood.
So the motion would be a recommendation for preliminary plan approval, conditioned upon satisfying all items as listed in the February 16th, 2023 Hanover Engineering Letter. And the fire department letter? And all, yeah. The police department and the Lehigh Valley Plan. Yes. So I'll make that motion. Give me a second?
Second.
All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Captain.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Old Philadelphie Pike normal sketch plan.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Old Philadelphia Pike sketch plan. Introduce yourself, please, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Phil Malich. I'm the director of land management at Tuskus Homes. And to my right here is Mr. Chris Brown. He's a resident of the Land State of Architect. And he helped us prepare and submit the sketch plan to the township for discussion tonight. We are currently partners with the landowner in this project, and that's how we've submitted it. The part, the project was submitted over two parcels. And the zoning line in the township from the limited business district and the village center residential district kind of splits them. So the parcel line is the zoning boundary line. There's a good chance, based on some recent discussions and quite frankly, some miscommunication between the landowner and our office, that that southern parcel will not be included in the project when this comes back to the township in a more formal fashion. And what that's ultimately going to do is it's just going to drive the unit count down because that plays right into the density that's allowed for the site. But having said that, you can tell by the layout that we have submitted that the vast majority of this site is going to be ultimately preserved in some type of an open space. That's just a product of the allowed density that we have for a project like this. And also, it's limited by constraints that are in the township zoning ordinance related to environmental features. When we, when we submitted the sketch plans to the township, we did not have any environmental delineations done yet. So the environmental features that were presented on the sketch plan were just generally presented as wetlands. What we've since discovered, and is referenced in the township engineer review letter, is that it's actually a combination of stream corridor and wetlands. So if you're looking at the plan, on the left side of the page, that is to the south, as you can tell, we're right across from the township complex here. The wetland complex is, is pretty much associated to the south of the, of the, of the property. And the top three quarters of it is really a stream. What that does is it actually works against us in that the stream limitations and the buffer impacts are greater for a stream than they are for a wetland. So that's something that we're going to have to navigate as we survey the property and quite frankly, refine the project. Currently, we're presenting three buildings of thirteen garden apartments. We presented this with four independent parking lots and accesses on the Old Philadelphia Pike. It's really a double frontage configuration in that three-seventy-eight is the back of this project as it's presented. So there's really no development proposed on the other side of the creek on parcel one or parcel two. And the township engineer provided a very thorough letter. The major pain points of the letter had to do with the environmental constraints, buffering, the impacts, and the weighted impacts that are associated with those environmental buffers, the driveway connections to Old Philadelphia Pike, and the setback limitations for the garden apartment buildings. So the garden apartments are allowed in the zoning district, but there's catch. And the catch is that we have to present architectural renderings, and they can't just look like boxes. They have to really fit into the neighborhood. So as we work on preliminary and final plans, you'll be seeing a lot of that product come in with our plan submissions. I'll take it over to Chris, if you don't mind, you can kind of talk some more specifics about some of those key items.
Good evening, everybody. There's no pressure on this project. When Phil first presented it to me, I thought this is the, you know, the last undeveloped parcel right across a municipal complex. And I thought to myself, oh, this is going to be a real challenge. And one that I, that I willfully accepted. And, and I really think the, the layout speaks to sort of the seriousness that we put into the fact that this is right across the street from, from the municipal complex. And within a, within a portion of this village center district that has a lot of original character, I think, for the lower side of the township. And so while we were excited about that, the prospect of garden apartments in, in this project, we wanted to make sure that we presented something to you guys that was respectful of the scale and character of the existing homes and buildings in this, in this part of the township. And, and that's why we ended up with three buildings. May not be the most economical way to develop garden apartments, but we wanted the size and positioning scaled these so that it would be harmonious with the varying structures and single family homes and varying buildings along Old Philadelphia Pike. Also another reason why we have the individual driveways. I appreciate the fact that it pointed out that, you know, in some respects, the distance between the driveways and the sheer number of driveways that we are in compliance at this term of time in the sketch. But we felt that breaking up the parking and having the driveway connections to Old Philadelphia Pike was still sort of more in keeping with the scale and character of the way this portion of the township is currently developed. We have an alternate sketch plan that I was going to share with you guys tonight. It basically hooked this, took the review letter and did some very minor modifications. We feel really brings it into almost direct compliance with some favorable interpretations and some discussion about a couple of items that Phil alluded to, that being the setbacks. We really like the, the, the provision in the zoning ordinance that talks about setbacks being averaged in an area of the township where the majority of the structures along that, the existing streak are already sort of non-conforming. The idea of taking that averaging. So we, so we took a look at, first of all, the, the sketch plan was submitted trying to respect the underlying VC district setback, which, so what you see before you is a twenty-five foot setback. Garden apartments, however, in the VC district require a fifty-foot setback, which, you know, we, we feel would be inappropriate looking, you know, by comparison. So, so the sketch plan I submitted was deliberately shown at the twenty-five foot. Hopefully, we can have this conversation. But then, Mr. Governor pointed out, which we appreciate, this averaging actually allows us to, 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 I think, get even more in compliance with the character, maybe not so much the underlying zoning. So when we looked at the setback district, or the setback distances to the north and to the south, we actually came up with an average of seventeen feet and some change. So we prepared an alternate plan that shows eighteen feet. One of the things that wasn't exactly clear, though, in the ordinance is, does that then reset the setback for the parking? You know, if, if, if we had, if we utilized this averaging for the setback, and that sets the new front yard setback, does that also relate to the parking? I think that's something that we welcome some discussion about tonight, or that's something that we would certainly pursue with the zoning officer and the township engineer to, to further that interpretation. But, so on our alternate sketch plan that I had with us tonight, we talked about how you still show the twenty-five foot. Getting some relief to that setback would, would actually reduce the impact to the environmental and natural resources to the east, you know, to behind our units. So the other way in which we comply with the, with the review letter in an intentional format is to reduce the number of driveways from four to two and then connect the parking lots in the rear. I guess maybe we should just end and add our alternate.
A couple of thoughts while Chris is handing this out. When we put Chris on this project, we felt it was important to, as Chris mentioned, respect the size and scale of the other buildings on Old Philadelphia Pike as well as the township complex. And so, you know, you can tell just by the way that the building is oriented, the narrowest side of the building is on Old Philadelphia Pike, as opposed to rotating at ninety degrees where you have the long side on Old Philadelphia Pike. We felt that this way was more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood because you don't have a very ominous, you know, long facade along Old Philadelphia Pike. And you don't really have that anywhere else. So we made it a point to orient the buildings that way intentionally. And this is why the setback discussion is important because we, by keeping the, the buildings closer to Old Philadelphia Pike, as Chris mentioned, that keeps it out of these environmental, environmental sensitive areas that are important to the township. But it also keeps them, with that narrower, narrower dimension of the building, more in keeping with the size and scale of the other structures that are on, that are on the road.
I have a general question. Can someone explain to me the averaging for the setback? How, how is it being done?
Well, for a road in Old Philadelphia Pike is a perfect example that the houses built on Old Philadelphia Pike are long before zoning in general, so they're all too close to build. So if somebody wants to build on an undeveloped parcel like this, rather than respecting the setback that would push back and would actually look at a place along the road, then ordinance allows them to look at how the other houses are all set, come up with an average and then place the new buildings so they look like they fit in with the other thing.
Have you, do you guys have a wetland study for this parcel?
The wetlands have been delineated and we're in the process of surveying over this plan right now.
So you are not sure exactly what you're working with?
No, but what we did is obviously we have, we got, we got a sketch from our environmental scientist. That was shared with Chris. And so the plan that is up on the screen now that Chris just passed out is respectful of that sketch. So it's not exact.
Yeah, I see that, so.
It's not exact, but it's, it's certainly closer than the original sketch plan that was entered into the township. And the main difference here, as I alluded to earlier, is that you can see the prominent blue feature here. That is the streaming corridor that was delineated through the site. So in, in short, there's less wetlands and more stream on the, after we delineate the site.
Yeah, and I think I favor the, the alternate sketch from the initial. I understand that orientation of buildings, I think that makes sense. When I first looked at that, I was wondering if there was an opportunity to put some of that parking behind the buildings rather than between them.
Right.
It, it might be more favorable for the residents as well to have some green space on the front of those rather than asphalt on both sides. And did you look at that at all, some potential of that parking?
Yeah, we had to react pretty quickly to the township engineer's letter because we wanted to have something that was as, as much respectful of that as possible when we came here tonight. It's certainly something that we can look at. I think the limiting factor for us is the township's environmental constraints with respect to the buffering, particularly off of any stream in the township. It's a hundred feet off the front side of the stream. And so if you, it's, it's very particular to kind of flip back and forth between the two. But you can see how that buffer expands from the wetland to the stream corridor. And I think we're at what, fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent.
So anything inside that dashed line, which you can see is up pretty close to the, the eastern edge or the, at the bottom of the apartment buildings, we can only disturb fifteen percent of that total area on the site. So now disturbance is disturbance. So to your point, if there's an opportunity to move some of that parking behind the buildings as opposed to the side, I think that's something that we can certainly have a aim. But we certainly can't move a large swath of disturbance behind those buildings because then we're pushing into those buffer areas.
So do you think the sketch you handed out respects that fifteen percent as close as you get from that?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I did a rough calculation and it's right, it's just under it.
And the only way to really maximize that area behind would be orient the buildings in, in right now?
Right. You know, I would put, and we, we tried to illustrate what we would, what we would want to do regarding this requirement is really buffer the parking from the, from the street side, you know, really narrow it down to really what would be visually equivalent to a, you know, a double-wide, single-family home driveway. So I think from the public perspective, we could kind of maintain that character from the public view. But I, it's a good point. We're also going to look at softening up the, the environment for the residents as well. Trees and interior landscape.
Your preference is the two driveways over the four?
You know, personally, I think my preference is the four. I, you know, I think, I think it's less pavement and I think it's, I think it's, it's, it's very close to meeting the separation. We did, we did spread things out a little bit, so, so we're even closer to meeting the separation guidelines in, in the township. But I, I think it's, I think it's unfortunate to have the additional asphalt in the rear.
I think having as green yards as possible.
The ultimate trade-off on this site is anything behind those buildings is impacting the buffers. Quite frankly, more than we would like to. We, we like the idea of keeping as much of this on the road as possible. And the way that we mitigate that, you know, normally that's a scary concept, but here it's all kind of broken up. We have small buildings and we have small parking lots. So we think it makes more sense to have those four independent connections and alleviate that extra pavement behind buildings.
It's, it's nice that they did that option for you so that you could see if we wanted to reduce the number of driveways to comply with better than by the path section of the ordinance, how it would impact on other sections or which, which layout do you like better? I'm just trying to know what they're, what they're asking.
Yeah, that is true. I mean, with them, if those drivers are in the back, now the buildings are completely surrounded by asphalt rather than, yeah.
I think it also reduced, having the floor as opposed to two or even one, it spreads out the, I mean, we're not going to have a full lot of traffic, you know, quote unquote, but it spreads out the, you know, the load.
What's your proposal for waste management?
That's a good question. Whether there would be interior trash rooms that were managed with Brian and Holler, or if we had to do an outdoor collection, it would be screening and buffering and enclosed. The, the buildings are conceptual at this point. I mean, they, they mimic a square foot that would support the unit count that we're, that we're proposing. And we, and we deliberately tried to show articulated roof lines and varying facades, you know, in keeping with what the ordinance requires and quite frankly, we would want to do, I think, anyway, for the reasons we've already described. But it's, it's purely conceptual, you know, we're, I think we're just getting into the, into the architectural design following this, you know, this made.
Right now, you have like, it looks like about two parking spaces per apartment?
Yes.
Have you built these types of those before?
Mike, have we done garden apartments before? Something of this size and scale, yeah. I think that there's going to be more attention here to the architectural elements. That's not something that personally, since I've been at Tuskus, that we, that I've experienced. We, you know, they've been more.
That's what I'm curious about, the architecture of the city.
But when we come back in with the preliminary plan, it is a requirement that we present those types of documents to you guys. That's all part of the discussion. My, you know, my vision for this, when we, when we started down the road here, is that, you know, they may be a very similar product between two or three of these buildings, but just by orienting them, flipping them a hundred and eighty degrees, maybe you have a different facade treatment on that side of the building as opposed to the other. You know, so it does look like independent products, even though largely they're going to be the same on the interior.
Yeah, changing the size of materials, colors, you know, roofing. There's a lot of different ways that we can build them efficiently, but, but still maintain a lot of diversity and character.
Are they all going to be rental?
Yes.
I guess if they need more parking, there's parking lot in the area.
Well, pick up basketball, you probably.
There is no street lights.
No, no.
No, but we do have frontage improvements. That's, we haven't really talked about that, but, you know, the township ordinance does require the standard roadway frontage improvement. So we are proposing street trees, sidewalk and road lighting along the frontage, if you have any other typical requirement.
Yeah, it's great to have sidewalk, but it feels just there.
Right.
But, and that comes up a lot. Will we preserve the area and defer it to another time where it makes more physical connection sense and it's?
Unless you want to put it in from there. Who wants to do that?
Yeah, you should definitely have that discussion when, when you come back because it may really look out of place.
Yeah, yeah.
If you put that in there, especially since this was developed.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah. Certainly preserve the area so you have the ability to do it if, if it warrants it down the road, but.
So I guess, do you want some more specific direction on the, the parking arrangement now? Or would that be helpful for you or?
Yeah, I think what's helpful for us, you know, we have the alternatives AMV here. You know, we, we defer, well, I guess we're kind of in a hybrid now. We like the smaller setbacks based on the direction that the township engineer led us in. But we like the concept of independent parking lots with the independent driveways. We think that just makes more sense for the scale of the project.